Commissioner Rossi.
Here.
Commissioner Howland.
Here.
Commissioner Sheard.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Jenkins.
Here.
Chairperson Derling. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
May be seated. Do we have any public communication of non-agenda items?
We do not have any public communication on non-agenda items.
Okay, we will open the public hearing for item one. Staff report.
Yes, Commissioners, this evening we have a consultant that has been doing this work for us, Mark Wolfe from North Star Engineering out of Chico, and he will present this item.
I got it.
There, okay, I'm on. It's been a real pleasure coming to work here with the folks, the city of Orville. We're under contract for on-call planning services. A while ago, got a call from Wes and Don, said, hey, we might need some help looking at some development standards for the South Orville area. As you know, there's been an ongoing effort with the city and the community to look at ways to kind of encourage investment in that part of town, make things a little more lively. One of the things that was going on is that because the lots down there are generally quite a bit smaller, either in terms of width or overall size, than the standards that would typically apply in an R1 zoning district, they were running into problems with people who wanted to build houses, but were finding the lots were constraining them. They weren't able to get the setbacks or lot coverage or something like that. So we started looking at ways to maybe address those concerns and open things up a bit. So that we met with a couple of members of the community, some builders down there, and we're looking at just the South Orville area, and that's the graphic you see there is the South Orville area that would be the subject of these changes. The changes address things like setbacks, lot coverage, and also some site planning and parking matters as well. Maybe we can get the side-by-side graphic there, Danny? And this is a good reference for what we're proposing here tonight. This captures pretty much everything. Right now, we have on the left what we'd be faced with for a lot of the parcels down in South Orville. A lot of them are just around 4,700 square feet. That's smaller than the 5,000-square-foot standard in the R1 zone, and they're a little bit narrower, too. The standard is 50 feet, and there are a lot down there that are 40 and 45 and that kind of thing. So on the left, what you see is a home that would be compliant with the standards today, and that would mean that you would have a 2,000-square-foot site coverage limit. The code says that whenever you have a lot that's less than 5,000 square feet, automatically you go down to a 2,000-square-foot maximum site coverage limit. Everywhere else, it's 50%. So if you have a lot that's, you know, 10,000 square feet, you can have 5,000-square-foot site coverage. But when the lots get down below 4,000 square feet, it automatically jumps down to 2,000 square feet or below 5,000 square feet. So the home would be limited to 2,000 square feet. There would be five-foot setbacks on both sides, the side yards. Rear yard setback would be at 20, and then, of course, the front setback has a minimum of 15 feet, but normally you see it at 20 along with the garage. So that's kind of what we see there on the left. The problem is that the houses that are being proposed don't quite fit that model. They need a little more room on the sides, and then the site coverage becomes an issue as well. So what's being proposed is what you see on the right there. We have the 50% maximum site coverage standard instead of just the blanket 2,000, and that would allow on a typical lot in South Orville to go up to, you know, 2,200-plus square feet, whereas now it'd be limited to about 2,000 square feet. We also are proposing some changes in the side yards. Right now, it's five and five. The proposal is to go with a minimum of three, but a composite total of eight. So you'd have the flexibility to say, well, I'm going to go four and four, or I'm going to go three and five, as long as you end up with eight total, and that's what's depicted there on that graphic on the right. We also are proposing to reduce that rear yard setback down to 15 feet. Again, we're dealing with lots that are a little narrower than normal, so we need some room to move things back. And there's another element to this that advances some general plan policies about urban design and creating streetscapes that are appealing and making sure that garages don't dominate the streetscapes. And so there would be a requirement that garages be set back just three feet from the main building, so there could be a little bit of an offset on any of these new homes down there. So that's just a quick take on what's being proposed here. There are, as I said, you know, general plan policies that talk about the streetscape issue. There are general plan policies that talk about removing barriers to development. So this is an implementation of your general plan for this part of the community that needs some help, and this is something that we think is going to open up the door to a lot of people moving ahead with some projects down there. We hope that we can get support with the commission and later on with the city council. Just some of the nuts and bolts parts of what we're doing here tonight for environmental review. We're recommending adoption of a categorical exemption under the, what they call the commonsense standard, which is clear that there aren't any issues environmentally on this project. So that's before you tonight as well, along with the resolution recommending approval to the city council. So that concludes what I've got to say right now. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The commonsense standard, is that something real?
Yes, it is.
Can you tell me more about that?
Yes, it's right out of CEQA, and it basically boils down to as long as it can be seen with certainty that there is essentially no chance that the project is going to have any effect on the environment.
Okay.
That's the commonsense exemption.
And that's the word for that. Okay, thank you.
Would these, do you think these changes would have any effect on if there was a large fire, the fire spreading, or the ability to fight the fire?
No, I don't, and I say that kind of confidently because whatever is built is going to have to comply with the Building and Fire Code. That's going to take precedence over anything here. A building code would normally allow a minimum three-foot setback, so I don't see an issue there, no. Thank you.
So one of the things that, in addition to that, is if somebody does use the three-foot side yard setback, we do want there to be at least eight feet between structures. So the neighboring structure, you wouldn't be able to use the three-foot setback if the neighboring structure was three feet also from their property line.
So I have a couple of questions. Here, let me get to my note page here real quick. So would people be able to propose a stacked home in this standard? I didn't, a two-story home. I didn't see that addressed in here. Maybe I missed it, but...
It's not addressed specifically. No, it doesn't. It certainly...
This is just talking about the footprint, not the size of the home if it had a second story.
Correct, site coverage, yes.
Okay. The second is, what work has been done to get input from people who are living in the community about the change in the standard?
Well, I've attended a couple of the community meetings. We didn't really talk about this specifically. Wes and I have, though, met with a couple of representatives from the neighborhood who were interested in this subject and went through these changes with them, and I think we found good support there.
People who live in the neighborhood versus people who own property that is in the neighborhood, because that can often, especially in this neighborhood, can be two different things sometimes, so.
We specifically invited six or seven developers known to be doing work in South Orville, and two of them came and gave pretty significant positive input for this.
Developers that would be hired by the property owner to build or developers, the people who would own the property and build it for rent or sale?
In one case, it was a developer who would own the property and rent it out.
I'm asking because I want to make sure that this isn't going to be a big surprise to people who are living in the neighborhood, if there are any unforeseen issues that might come up that only people living in the neighborhood would be able to tell us about. I mean, I have a planning background myself, and I read through this thing, and this makes, you know, from a planning perspective, this makes perfect sense, what we're trying to do here, and I just want to make sure that there aren't any, isn't anything unforeseen that we wouldn't be able to see from our limited view that people living in the neighborhood would be able to tell us about.
Sure, and I could say that, yeah, none of the changes that are being recommended are dramatic. It's not going to transform the neighborhood. We're talking about some fairly nominal changes overall to deal with these substandard lots, and we just need a little help to allow them to develop.
So would a property owner be able to fit like a double-wide modular under the new standard on a standard lot?
Sure.
Be, okay.
Any more questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? No? Thank you. We will limit the discussion to planning commissioners, and if no further questions, a motion.
I have a question. On these lots, are you requiring curb gutter sidewalk on these lots when they're redeveloped?
Currently, we have waived the requirement to do curb gutter and sidewalk for residential development in that area.
And that's because?
That's because the widths of the roads are also substandard, and so to gain the proper width to have on-street parking, which many of these properties don't have on-site parking, then it would be difficult for them to accommodate that curb gutter sidewalk in front of their residences, and it would be spotty for new development. And so we, again, have chosen to waive this for residential at this time because it's not an equitable standard within our code. We're going to rewrite that in the future.
I've done a lot of surveying with the county, and that was part of the county.
Yeah.
And it really needs a drainage study, and it really needs to be laid out right. If you did piecemeal, if you did piecemeal, it wouldn't come together well.
We have a drainage study underway, and so that's going to help us with not only this section, but on the west side of Lincoln Boulevard and the residences that live or that reside down in the lower sections of Fort Wayne and that area. So we are moving forward with that. It's time-consuming, but we're waiting for that topo to come back so we can start addressing these issues.
Is there a plan, though, to eventually curb gutter sidewalks outside, or?
Potentially, there's a lot more study that needs to go with that because, again, the width of the streets in that area are substandard. So you would either have to have a sidewalk on one side of the street or the other and not both, but then there also comes the right-of-way acquisition that would come with that, and that's a very substantial acquisition in that area.
So do you need to have sidewalk, or can you just do curb gutter?
That's, we're still looking into that deeper.
I imagine we'll end up with some sort of a hodgepodge that's not consistent from street to street, that's just appropriate to each individual.
Yeah, but you see that all around the city. You see that when you develop a commercial, you know, a commercial building, you got curb gutter sidewalk in the front, and it's a walkway to nothing on either side.
Right.
So that and I imagine, so that and I imagine the expense of adding that to as a condition is probably helps, would help limit development in the area, right?
Exactly, so that's why we've waived it for residential properties.
Whereas for commercial, it's going to be a lot more feasible, financially feasible.
Because, I mean, South Side needs a lot of, needs a lot of help. Let's just face it.
Absolutely. Yeah, as we, once we receive the topo and we really understand the drainage in the area, we're going to go through another study to determine what would be the best action forward for all of these properties. And again, it'll be an individual street analysis because the widths are varying.
Okay.
I guess I am a little bit concerned that we didn't really ask the residents. It seems like such a great idea to me. I love all of it, but just the fact that only developers were asked does bring just a little bit of a concern to me, that I don't really know how we could address that at this point. I don't know if notices go out. Like, I'm not sure the procedure when you change something like this in a neighborhood.
The procedure, there's over 2,000 residents in the South Orville area, and the procedure is if there's less than 1,000 names, then the newspaper publication is the adequate public notice, and we did all of that preparatory to this. We also have mentioned it wherever we've gone, down in South Orville, just to folks, saying that we're moving to liberalize the setbacks on-street or on parcels, these substandard parcels. There are, in fact, almost 600 parcels that are substandard in size. A little over 100 of them are vacant, and so this will focus in on encouraging new construction on those 100 or so vacant parcels in South Orville.
I can add that when I saw this on the agenda and saw the, you know, saw the draft standards here, I went ahead and reached out to the folks who I knew who lived in the neighborhood and asked if they, which is why I asked the question, you know, asked if this is something they knew was coming about, and none of them did. But one of the two people that I actually spoke with on the phone who saw the standards, they were all for it. It's a small sample of two, but, you know, it's...
And Janet Goodson did attend the DRC meeting.
Yes.
And she is the, you know, the district representative there.
And she is supportive and interested in this, yeah.
So overall, I think it's a really good idea. I'd love to see that area get new development.
Agreed. I'd saw something on the news that the city of Chico had pre-approved plans for ADUs. I don't know what that would cost a city to do, but a pre-approved plan with a mirror plan for something like this would save somebody a lot of money and possibly convince them to build.
We just had that discussion this week, and we are considering. At this point, we've only had about four applications for ADUs in Orville, so we've unofficially adopted HCD's requirements for ADUs, but we have decided that as we move forward, we will likely adopt some master plans to make it beneficial for ADUs to be constructed within the city limits and cost-effective.
Open for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation.
I'll second it. That we adopt the resolution.
Yeah, was it P 202213? Is that the right one?
I have.
All right.
We have a motion, a second. We take a vote? Well, I guess that takes care of all items. We will go to commissioner reports, commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioner reports? No commissioner reports. Any historical advisory commissioner reports?
Oh, I was working on one, but then I got sidetracked by the Gateway Project.
That's okay.
That's my excuse. I was working on the Bank of Italy. That'll be next time.
Okay. Well, staff reports.
Yes, we have, as you know, put the Gateway Project on as a new item, which made this a special meeting. The Gateway Project is now the subject of a development agreement where the city has executed a development agreement. The city council has approved this, executed a development agreement with a company called CMG Project 1200 LLC, which is controlled by Mark Mendez. And Mark, as you know, we worked with him on the Ford dealership across the street. So on June 7th, the city council approved this master development agreement, and as part of the deal, and the Planning Commission was not involved at this point. So since this is a light agenda, we thought it would be useful to present this information and inform the Planning Commission of this project and its implications and what the Planning Commission is going to see in the future, so.
And Wes, just to interrupt for a moment, it's not just a newly executed development agreement, it's a reassignment of a former development agreement, just to clarify.
Former, from how long ago?
From Schneider, Schneider and Associates.
2007.
Okay.
And having that be an amendment allowed the city to provide this land to Mark Mendez for $1. The site has been vacant for decades, as you know, and Mark owns the 1.6 acres, which is the blank spot there, that it now has a childcare facility on it. The rest is 12.84 acres, and so the agreement allows Mark to develop the Gateway, subject to the scope, which is outlined in Exhibit 3 of the development agreement, as to what he can put on there and what the conditions under which he can develop. So the project envisions three anchor tenants, a three, four, or five diamond hotel, and there is a list of potential hotels, a partial list of potential hotels there in your packet. A specialty grocer of about 12,000 to 20,000 square feet, which is about one-third to one-half of a typical Safeway or Rayleigh's grocery store, and typically that, common names for those would be Sprouts, Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, and others. Upscale apartments and condominiums also, or apartments or condominiums. Other occupants would include sit-down restaurants, specialty retailers, services such as banks and photographers, professional offices, potentially including medical, and drive-through restaurants along Montgomery. The site plan, you see the conceptual site plan that he presented to the city council back in June, has five drive-through restaurants in it. What is prohibited is adult businesses, tobacco retailers, appliance, automobile, repair and related services, and laundromats, self-service laundromats. So the city, other conditions of the development agreement, the city is to name a liaison to work regularly with the developer, who is also to name a liaison as the project progresses in five phases. And the first phase is marketing. You see in your packet the current marketing brochure, and there is a national marketer, marketing to national tenants, and there is a local, Century 21 is a local real estate firm, marketing to local businesses and tenants. Also in Phase 1 is subdividing the property and identifying and making agreements with potential sub-developers. After that comes engineering and architectural design and such. So you do have the previous Gateway concept there, the one that says circa 2007, to give you kind of a sense of the type of information that we'll eventually get as this project moves forward and will bring to Orville. So as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, each of these projects will individually go through design review and whatever appropriate permits would be required. As you know, the drive-throughs and any business offering alcohol sales will require use permits from this commission, and residential will require either rezone or some other approval since this entire parcel property is on C2, and multifamily residential is not allowed use in C2. in C2 zoning. So there will have to be some adjustments made, and it'll come to this commission. The flow diagrams also outline the, you can go ahead and put one up on the screen there. Also outline the process for the entire projects with the tentative subdivision map. Very likely, this could be split into, I think, up to 12 different parcels and sold or leased separately. And then the second page is for individual project review. Some initial thoughts, if any of you listened to the Planning Commission's discussion of this on June 7th. Councilmember Riggs wanted to make sure that the project reflects Oroville's historic flavor. Councilman Smith wants the project to include mid and upscale tenants. And Councilmember Goodson said upscale is desired and suggested condominiums for the housing instead of apartments. Mark said in that presentation that he wants to utilize the levee and river views for the hotel and for an upscale restaurant. And just as a side note, the city is now working with Feather River Recreation and Park District to transfer the parcel from the levee to the river behind this project to the city so that Bedrock Park and working with DWR and the entire vicinity will be cleaned up and a beach will be created. And so that the levee and the river will be an amenity for this Gateway project that can be designed in and built in as part of it. So that's a wonderful amenity.
Who owns that parcel now?
Feather River Recreation Park.
The park district owns the parcel.
Yeah, there's actually three parcels that Dawn is working with them to get transferred over to the city.
You said including Bedrock Park.
Correct.
Parcel, okay. Pardon me, I'm just looking at the parcel on my phone.
They would still have the skate park and the tennis courts. But the city will have contiguous connection of parcels from the Highway 70 Bridge over the river to Centennial Plaza and beyond.
So this preliminary site plan, it is called preliminary. Some of the discussion at the staff level today, just some comments, and then we're going to throw it open to the Planning Commission for discussion and comments and questions. This site plan shows many separate establishments, all surrounded by parking. They're not connected. There does not appear to be any car or any human-oriented or walkable scale or gathering opportunities in here. So like more successful and newer centers that do invoke these principles and the principles of human scale and great streets and gathering places. Staff, well, we suggest that the site plan be upgraded and updated with designs that incorporate some of these features. So that's where we are. This is information for the Planning Commission and open for comments.
Would there be phases? And would the city require certain, the hotel to be built first or anything, certain stages?
Phasing isn't described or discussed, physical phasing of the project. However, we received today the marketing brochure, which is in front of you. And if you look on the page where they're seeking drive-throughs there, the three pads that they're promoting, that says Phase 1. So it appears that the first phase is to recruit the drive-throughs.
I just wouldn't want to see a portion of this constructed and then dropped before we, the city got sort of what they were looking for.
Right. That's where our plan, we intend to sit with the developer to have him put together a full site plan to be brought back. It'll end up being a subdivision map, basically because of all the parcels that will be divided out in that. But if he chooses to go more than four. However, our plan is to have him identify the sites, the users, and then we'll move forward from there. We would like something a little more solid in place than just drive-through restaurants at this point.
One of the potential reasons he's doing this is because the drive-through restaurants are probably going to be easier and quicker to recruit. And he'll get some revenue from that. And that would enable him to more easily develop the rest of the property. There's going to have to be quite a bit of new infrastructure put in there and such. One of the other comments or suggestions was that if all the parcels are sold off individually, there have to be CCNRs or some kind of design requirements that will require the entire development to be built, you know, with the same theme, with the same designs, et cetera, et cetera. So there's not just, so it does not become Orodam Boulevard miniature.
Just looking at it, I do have quite a few concerns. And then comparing this layout in this vital gateway to our downtown with river access to the general plan. So I just kind of highlighted a few things. The parking along the water seems extreme, like absolutely the wrong thing to do, especially according to the general plan where we're supposed to have water activities and recreational activities for people to enjoy and connect the river to downtown and connect the levee to the river to downtown and make that all very seamless. So I don't see on this any way to even get to the water.
This is not his proposed plan. So, and also, I met, yeah, I met with the consultant for our master plan for Bedrock Park, the levee, and the nature center today. And he's going to be in contact with Mr. Mendez so that they can work together on that shared river access so that it can flow and be more cohesive as to what we're looking for.
And recreational activities, like you could rent a kayak, can go down.
That will be at Bedrock Park. We're currently developing a kayak kiosk.
Okay. That's the kind of thing, just that connection. I was thinking also, and in the general plan, it talks about not taking away from downtown, not competing with downtown. I don't want to have a little competition here. I want this to bring people to downtown.
Right.
Bring tourists to the river. Five fast food restaurants doesn't seem in keeping with what the staff's concerns also to me for nice, high-end dining. Personally, I kind of think we need more nice, high-end condos too, to bring people to spend money would be wonderful. And yes, I think it's already been mentioned, I don't see any green space. I don't see any walkable spaces. I don't see places for children in that pedestrian area to bring the skate park in.
It says preliminary site plan, which is basically a conceptual plan. Yeah, I didn't put any stock in any, in any of the actual thing.
I mean, it does say here in the agreement that the city and the developer each understand and acknowledge and agree that this agreement is a living document and a work in progress. Therefore, this agreement may be changed by the city administrator and the developer to serve the best interests of the people of Oroville. So I was wondering, where does the Planning Commission fit in to, if this is not the design, like where do we fit in? And how do the people kind of get their voice in here?
If the developer presents single individual projects one at a time, then it's harder. However, the tentative subdivision map or tentative parcel map, subdivision if there's more than four parcels, will have to come to this commission for review and approval. And at that time, the commission can put conditions on it for design and for all kinds of other requirements. The developer is marketing three individual parcels now as drive-throughs, promoting three individual parcels there, which have not been created as of yet. So he's trying to get commitments early on from users so that he can begin developing the site.
But what you're telling me is those, that isn't even really approved yet.
That's correct.
This is still conceptual, very conceptual.
Okay.
We're all just discussion at this point. Like, you know, you're pointing out the parking on the part of the parcel that's fronting the parcel that will get transferred to the city. The levee is actually above, is not in that parcel here. It's actually above the parcel boundary there. But yeah, the parking between the buildings and that area, I can, yeah, that's not going to fly in a final plan. But yeah, it's.
I hate to throw this out real quick, but following our branding consultants being here last week, some direction among staff has changed in the process we take for reviewing applications, trying to hold Oroville to a higher standard with our development. So part of that also includes implementing more policies of our general plan into the decisions we make. So for example, one of the components of our general plan does say, as a policy, provide final site plan approvals for shopping centers only after the expression of interest by appropriate major tenants, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. So approaching this development will likely be different from how we've previously approved development as piecemeal individual. Also, as part of the development agreement, Mark Mendez is supposed to provide the city preliminary plans for review and comments and then final plans. So if this is not yet his preliminary plan, we have not yet seen what is being proposed. So
Okay.
Those are where we have to engage with the developer as part of the development agreement provisions and work things out along those lines. So this is where it is helpful for you guys to get your comments into us, which you guys may have, you know, concerns, things like that. And we can have that written down as we sit down and discuss with the developer.
And I expect the developer is going to, they're going to bring things to us piece by piece, just based on the interest that they get based on their marketing and spot by spot. Like, you know, I can't imagine that, you know, that they'll find a grocer for this particular spot in this plot. You know, I imagine, I imagine we could attract a hotel here, probably in a bigger footprint that's envisioned here, and definitely something taking advantage of the waterfront. I mean, it seems like there's a tremendous opportunity here for folks interested in that kind of development.
Yes, we need to exploit, and we need to take the river back.
But that's all going to be developed, it's all going to be planned based on what interest they get from the marketing, I'm assuming, right?
Good chunk of it, yes.
And one of the components, and I haven't seen the final executed and signed development agreement, but one of the components does discuss preliminary plans, where the developer, after the close of escrow, has to provide the city for our review, preliminary plans that include overall development concepts of the site, showing subdivided parcels, building locations, point of ingress and egress, landscaping, and conceptual elevations. So this preliminary preliminary that you see that the council reviewed is not the official one because it doesn't meet the requirements of the development agreement.
And I guess the other thing that I think is really important too, because I've talked to a few people who own restaurants downtown, they really don't want to feel that they're, that people will just get off the freeway, go to this gateway development, and never make it downtown. And that's so opposed to the general plan also. So I guess I would say, I think if we're creative, we could connect it. We can have some water. I don't know, like I said, get in a kayak or, you know, take those Sega, what are those little?
Segways.
Segways, you know, start there, go downtown, come back, just some way to really entice people down there to our downtown. That would just be one of my really important ones. And then I love this idea of the city taking ownership of, so we can take back the levee and the river and Bedrock Park and all of these wonderful resources that we have. And this has to be all melded together.
Is it possible for the city to recommend an architectural theme for this? I heard that Councilor Riggs wanted a recommended historic.
Yes. Yes. And that's what we're looking for as well, is a cohesive theme throughout this development.
I know you guys are stressing that this is very preliminary, but this, this style is definitely not the style that it should be.
No.
Connor, on the fast food, I guess it kind of, so this, this is very preliminary. This can change 100% correct?
Correct.
And so for the fast food, if there's drive-through, I guess it depends on, I mean, if you get a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out, you know, you have major car stacking issues. So that's going to really shape your design of this project, right?
Correct.
So would you limit those to being closer to Feather River or Montgomery? Because you don't want those fast food set inside the project, correct?
Yeah. So that, kind of where, as the developer works on trying to find interested tenants, all provisions of the municipal code, our development standards, design guidelines, policies of the general plan, they still apply. So just because they have a special development agreement, it was city property and transferred, that does not make them exempt from following the city policies that have been adopted. So we will still follow the same processes that we have followed previously. So for Dutch Bros or for Maverick, if we have to require that traffic study or making sure you have adequate screening and landscaping, those are all things that will still be considered as we go through that process through development review and then eventually to you guys for your final approval.
So on the development agreement, are these going to be build-to-suits? Or is he going to own the project and rent them to the anchor tenants? Or is that still yet to be determined?
The flyer says lease or sale. So I think they're open to both.
Yeah.
Will that affect the development agreement if a tenant comes in and they build their own store? I mean, what kind of agreement? Does it, does anything transfer to the new owner, I guess, for the development agreement?
The covenants transfer to the new owner. So for 10 years, it has to be developed within the parameters of the development agreement.
So then they're on the hook to make sure that they are abiding by the development agreement, correct?
Yes. And that's why we would like to have the CCNRs for this development as well, so that it stays in that developed fashion throughout its duration.
Yeah. And my concern is, you know, parking lot maintenance, parking lot security, you know, not, you know.
That's exactly right.
You know what I'm talking about, the stuff that we're dealing with now in some of these older shopping centers.
So is the daycare staying there? Because it just says existing, like.
We haven't been updated as to whether the tenant will stay or not.
Okay.
But is that building going to stay? Or can that, it just seems like if we're redoing the whole thing, you need to have a whole, you can't really keep one building that doesn't fit into the development standards.
Yeah, we're still having those conversations with the developer. He's alluded to the fact that he would like to address the facade of the facility so that it will match the new development. But we're working towards that.
I mean, the daycare center, I mean, just, yeah, children and life is wonderful. We absolutely want that, but.
I think that parcel wasn't a city parcel though. So the, the actual project is the outside.
It's a standalone parcel.
And Mark Mendez happening to own that parcel is a good coincidence, I guess.
Yeah. Yep. Now he has site control over all of it.
It won't, it won't have to match then. The city won't have.
That parcel doesn't fall within the development agreement.
Okay.
He owns the building, right? So we could always move the daycare somewhere and do something with that building. I think that might be better utilized as a fast food or something.
It's a large usable piece of land, right within the middle of the development.
Yeah.
Or you could leave it as what it is, but just, like you said, update the facade or just clean it up and make it integrate into the area.
Some grass, or some park, you know.
Like Chico has like an hourly childcare center, which is great. You can just drop your kid off for a couple hours to go run errands. So that might be something, hey, I'm going to go into this grocery store. I'm just going to drop them off to play for an hour or two. So that's an option.
Well, it's definitely needed. I mean, I was around in 2007 when this was originally planned or had a plan to be done. And I think it's, we need an anchor, we need another grocery store. We need these things here badly. And I think it's, we need an anchor, we need another grocery store, we need these things here badly. So, I mean, I don't afford it. Are we, are we voting on anything or this is just information?
Just discussion.
And we're going to, we need to exploit the river, we need to really clean the river up, take it back, have it reused by the residents and, yeah, that's going to be a big thing.
Will will this be competing with the area near Applebee's to get tenants?
Potentially, but the, again, following, you know, I feel like a broken record, but following our disasters, the construction or expansion of the hospital, the widening of Highway 70, we are a hub for development right now. They're, all the developers are looking at us and inflation and the market hasn't necessarily slowed that down at all, so.
What we don't need is another, what I would not like to see would be like another 99 Cent or Big Lots or Dollar Store in there. It should be very upscale, as upscale as Oroville can be.
Yes.
I would like to not see that type, because then you end up with a center where Mount Mike says you have all those vacant storefronts, broken windows.
We've already had that discussion with the developer.
That can't happen. Yeah, that can't happen.
So after this meeting, what's the next step? I mean, that's on this, which I.
Marketing and revision of the preliminary plan.
So after this meeting, we'll look back at the development agreement, begin following those provisions to ensure that Mark Mendez is following through on his side in addition to the city's responsibilities that we have to do. So there are certain dates that are outlined in there, you know, 30 days, 60 days, things like that after close of escrow. So Wes had mentioned the city liaison to the developer. So identifying that city liaison and working with the developer on ensuring comments that the city has, planning commission, staff are addressed. We received the preliminary plan, we'll review that likely, possibly up to Wes, if we want to do another planning commission discussion if anything's needed. And this, as I said, following our our goals and policies of the general plan to ensure we get a quality development.
Awesome, love that.
Is it possible that when you guys get significant updates, that you can bring those updates to the planning commission? So we can see how it's progressing and we can make our comments based on your progress?
Absolutely.
Yes. I think it's great.
Yeah, I drive that every day, twice a day. And I just always look and see how code enforcement is, you know, I see someone there and trash and then I see it cleaned up. So it'd be nice, I think it'll be easier when it's private development with life.
If any of the commissioners know of centers, gateways, I'm familiar with one in Lake Arrowhead in Southern California, which is sort of similar to this. You go in, the perimeter is all lined with shops and condos and and everything else. And they all front the water, lake, the lake with views and such. And all the parking's in the middle and there's lots of walking and there's fountains and there's places to sit and all of that. So if anybody else has a a place that they'd like emulated or features of it that they'd like emulated, please let us know because that's always quite helpful.
I think whoever designed the the proposed apartments near the cannery did a really good job on on that that rendering. You know, I'm talking about with the proposed underground parking?
Yes, that's one, I know, I agree.
Yeah, I really, really liked their proposal, it looked really nice.
It looked cool, yeah, it looked very cool. What, Lake Arrowhead, do you have the name of that development so I could look it up? It's just a gateway?
Yeah, it's just a gateway, it's right against the lake edge. And it's it's really obvious, once you, once you look at Google, it's at the south edge of the lake.
Are there any other staff reports?
Just notifying you of some upcoming projects. Development review on September 8th. We'll have four discussion items. One is the convention center facade. One is the city hall facade, plans for for the updating of the city hall facade. One is a tattoo parlor on Feather River right next to the Valero, across from the Motel 6, and which requires a use permit, and we're gathering information on that. And then one is Nori Restaurant, if you're familiar with Nori. It is going to be moving upstairs to the old Copa Restaurant nightclub facility. And so there's an alcohol permit that's coming to the development review committee and then to the planning commission for that.
What, that building on Feather River, it's the brown building, it's got the wrought iron fence around it, I think it used to be triple A, was it triple A?
No, that's going to be occupied by a worker's compensation doctor, professional in his, in his company. I'm talking about the one across the street, which is a little strip.
That's struggled.
With several tenants that's been struggling for a long, long time.
Tough struggle.
And what's going on with the, is it the budget in that burnt?
Yes.
What's going on with that?
They had demolished most of the buildings and we're going to reutilize some of the other buildings on the south there. But there's just been too many problems with vagrancy and theft and and other types of problems that they are. I drove by there today and it looks like they're already demolishing the rest of the building, so they'll be be building from scratch.
So they're getting rid of that little, on the south side, that little.
Yeah, it'll all come down and they'll they'll just start from scratch.
And you make the owner fence that thing in so people can't get in?
Well, when it's flat, the fencing's been stolen, too, so.
Twice.
What about the building at Robinson and Pine, by the YMCA, behind the YMCA? What's the status with that one that needs to go down to the ground?
Oh, the old fueling station?
No, it was a home, and then I think it was a triplex.
It, Donna, it's that office?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, by the YMCA.
That was purchased with the intent to have apartments there. And that the tenant or the owner, excuse me, has just stalled out on that.
So what's happening? I mean, it's a dangerous hazard, draws so many vagrants there.
When they first purchased that property, we walked with them and highly recommended that they get a structural analysis of the building because it went through the fire. And since then, have you heard from them?
I haven't, but we'll we'll check into it.
We can follow up with them on that.
14 something Pine is the address.
So how how long can that stay like that? It really is just a danger, it's hideous, it's just seems like like you're in a war zone.
We will talk with them, we'll try to get them to do something.
We're just kind of waiting for them, if you.
Yeah, they have it boarded up, but it may come to the point to where.
I thought the city maybe already had.
We'll check and see if there's code enforcement cases on that property or not.
Okay.
So I know code enforcement has worked with them on securing the property, but I don't know if they've received any citations.
How long can you have a building like that that just sits there derelict and nothing happens?
Now that we have an active and full code enforcement department, we can begin being more proactive with issues like that.
Yeah, we have these great codes and if we don't enforce them, there might as well not exist.
Our codes prohibit reuse without re-permitting after two years. But there's no code that that limits how long a building can stay vacant.
Well, there should be a minimum property standard.
There should.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, if it's burned out, you either got to fence it, you got to tear it down, you got to do something with it.
You got to fix it up.
There has to, you can't just have a dangerous uninhabitable, because it brings in squatters, it brings in.
The public nuisance codes kick in, yes.
And that was an old, is that the one that was, you talk about the old?
Catty corner to the retirement home.
Duplex.
Well, was it more than that or was it like four, five, six, seven, eight units?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was Stu John's building?
I don't know, there's a garage in back and there were several apartments upstairs.
Yeah, it's been burnt for a long time, right?
We'll follow up with code enforcement.
At least two or three years, yeah.
Yeah, it's been like that for a while. That's the first part about getting the historic downtown fixed.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think the house on Montgomery is in escrow now, so that old one that's down.
Really?
Down that way.
Do you want to tell me what's happening there?
I don't know anything more about it than that.
There's a really old one, actually, squatters live in it and they live in another building catty corner to it. It was the same in the family for a long time. The woman who owned it passed, it went on to her daughter or granddaughter, and they're both being sold. But I've, as I've been walking the neighborhoods, they're lived in with homeless people. But they're, it's very bad. So I don't know, it's almost like I don't even know if they could be fixed. I almost feel like it needs to come down.
The absolute sure way to guarantee that it gets looked at by code enforcement is to file a complaint form. And they're, they're there at the front, front desk.
And you can do it online, yep.
Yes.
Any update on the veterans? You know, the veterans right there on Feather River, no, not Feather River, what is it?
Montgomery.
Montgomery and 7th?
Second?
Yeah, when's that happening?
Sixth, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is, yeah, Cross and Bunny, the veterans thing, they're going to do a 10 or 12, whatever.
Our housing manager keeps in touch with them, we'll we'll inquire and and get back to you on that.
Okay. Just checking.
More questions or discussion? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting to September 22nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. This was good, we got to talk about extra things.